Everyone's eight thirty-two on Tuesday, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town in the Canons. We have a quorum present and first item on our agenda is to amend the agenda by adding some reappointments for the Board of Finance. You have it on you have a copy, so I moved we amend the agenda to make reappointments to the Board of Finance.
Second.
Off there. And then.
I also add to the agenda as well. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda an item regarding potential adding a meeting day in the month of December. We've had three in November, but only one in December, and I just want to have a discussion about that as an agenda item.
What day are we talking about?
Any date, possible dates in terms of, I know we already have one on the fourteenth. Got a couple of options potentially for other dates as needed.
I don't understand the.
So if we can talk about it as an agenda item, we can go into it further for do it now, whatever.
So you moved, you have a second?
Yeah, my second one.
All favor, I.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, this is a hybrid person in-person hybrid meeting. Those wishing to participate by remotely may email comments or questions on the agenda to B O S distribution at the Cana C T dot gov, and we will read them in the course of the meeting before the end of the meeting. Next item is the minutes from the special meeting on November fifteenth and a regular meeting held on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I move, we approve these minutes.
Second here.
Any comments or corrections? All favor. That's unanimous. I moved that we move the discussion of the ARPA special appropriate recommendations to the end of the meeting where we're going to executive session in part after the we're in conjunction with this special like the executive session, we're going to have it not to twenty Elm Street. So I move we make that change to the order of the agenda second.
Sure.
Okay, all favor. Right. See Chris Kaiser down here for information technology. Chris. What we have here. Provo Westside to renew a contract with Altis for light path and a renewal of a contract with Altis for light bath.
Brad, we have, we have two separate contracts. These are the renewals. The first one is for the they're called I V Bs Internet Voice Bundle for the phone and for the Internet connections for the entire when the second is the renewal for the West School connection.
Removal.
I'm sorry.
Oh, renewal, okay.
No, yes. Yeah, they've come down considerably. They've actually with with negotiating with them and going out and putting out to all the other vendors that have fiber in town. They've doubled the support and service. They've added a bunch of cybersecurity programs for us. And they've come down to the end of the contract of the after the thirty-six months, the savings is around sixty-three hundred dollars.
Okay, so this is the backbone of our our fiber network in town. Including a separate line to West School.
Yes.
Questions?
Yep.
Good on here.
I move, we approve these two contracts renewing without these business for light path as Chris described second.
Second.
All favor. That's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Good morning, Tiger.
Good morning.
So the first item would be a Dunning Road guide rail replacement. We received a quote from Atlas Companies for under a state bid for thirty-two thousand nine twenty-five. What we had is we had an accident occur. The intersection of Dunning and Weed Street took out the corner of the two cable guide rail. Two cable guide rails is sixty-year-old system that's outdated, needs to be replaced, and we've been doing that systematically throughout town. This just sort of facilitated that that removal and replacement. So we're looking at a to have the quote of thirty-two nine twenty-five with a contingency of forty-nine hundred for a total of thirty-seven eight twenty-five. I did ask Atlas for what it would cost to repair the existing system. They came with a quote of eight thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and eleven cents, which is what we'll seek for insurance reimbursement from the from the person who took out the guide rail originally. The the thought is that it's an outdated system. I don't know if it's necessarily fair to charge them for the thirty-two thousand dollar replacement on an outdated system, but they should have just at least make us whole on the on the repair. So the thought would be that we'd seek the reimbursement for eighty-three hundred and then go forward with the the entire replacement of the of the guide rail system at the at the thirty-two nine twenty-five.
Hey, Tiger, how many more of these locations do we have with respect to the cable?
Quite a few. We've been working, we have fifty thousand dollars in our budget each year to work through. There's one across the street at Dunning as well, so it's kind of on either side of the street. This is the the southern side, the northern side would have to be replaced. The thought there is that the homeowner would be staring at the back end of this guide rail, this new installation. So before I bring that forward, I want to at least notify them of that it would be changing before we bring it forward. I did get a quote for that, but I think we wait, talk to them because they'll be looking at a the back of a guide rail system instead of cables. Right. It's completely different look. The other side that we will be replacing is wooded so that the homeowner on that side can't necessarily see the guide rail. So we have locations there, Lapham Road, we have some. It's probably about three or four other locations that where we have these substandard rails that we need to move forward with. And then we have some others that are galvanized rail that we're looking to bring towards a rusted rail, the quartet that will bring forward. So I had originally anticipated in our budget, one more year, I think we'll have two more years of guide rail replacement, and that will be the the entire system will be whole at that point. Questions? No further questions. I move, we approve their request from Public Works to enter a contract with Atlas Companies LLC for total thirty-seven thousand eight twenty-five, which includes a contingency of fifteen percent for the replacement of cable guide rails at Dunning Road, as you've explained.
Second here.
For the discussion, all favor. That's unanimous.
Thank you. Do you want to do trees now or are you?
Sure, go ahead.
So, excuse me, the tree warden went out for another bid November eighteenth. Almstead Tree was the low bid at twenty-four thousand one twenty-five. All three bidders were under thirty thousand dollars, so they were quite tight throughout. This is for eleven separate locations in town. We'd like to, Almstead's done nice work for us in the past. We'd like to continue that relationship and ward this contract.
Question. I move, we approve the request from the tree warden to enter into a counter with Almstead Tree for twenty-four thousand one twenty-five for the removal pruning and stump removal of various trees in town, as like I explained.
Second.
All favor, I. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you're gonna stick around?
I'll stick around.
Now I understand why Paul's here. Good morning. Cheryl. Paul. This is the request to hire Corey Gilchrist as a part-time fire safety inspector.
Yes, we had eight applicants. We interviewed five. This will be for a part-time fire inspector. He will be with Paul seven hours a week and currently with the city of Norwalk. He's been a firefighter with them since two thousand thirteen, and before that was a volunteer with us. Paul, I don't know if you want to
So we still have John for how many days a week?
John is twelve hours a week, so he would be effectively replacing Rocky, who was sixteen hours a week or fifteen fourteen hours a week. So they have that. We're able to keep up this time, get everything done. We've got a lot of stuff in the pipeline, library and parish are going to be coming out of the ground about the same time, two weeks. That'll be a year. And there are several other large commercial applications, A, in the pipeline, or B, starting. There's also other things I'd love to do that I just haven't had time to do yet.
And the money is in the budget.
Questions?
So quick one, so the seven hours, is that two days a week or is it spread out?
One day a week.
One day.
And it'll be floating because he's a shift worker in Norwalk. And but he'll be able to give us his schedule month and month. So that'll be easy enough.
They're planning. Yeah. Good.
I move, we approve the request from Human Resources to hire Corey Gilchrist as a part-time fire safety inspector, as described by Cheryl and Paul.
Second.
For those questions, discussion. All favor, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to. Joined at the table is Brian Platts, Chief Building Inspector.
So we would like to recommend to bring Scott Becker off of probation. He has been with us for over the six-month probation. He's integrated well with staff, very professional and a great addition to our land use department. Scott is with us for those of you who have not met him. And I think he, we would like to move him to a full-time employee. Staff have worked very well with him and so has the public.
That's working out very well. He's getting trialed by fire because we're breaking records busy. So we hit the ground running. He's working out very well.
So you've got it. You've got a full complement of what you need.
Correct, yes.
Okay, well, questions?
I just want to compliment the process that you have. Thank you for sharing that, you know, information in terms of for any employee kind of going through the stages of probation. Very comprehensive and I appreciate it.
Scott, congratulations.
We haven't voted yet.
We'll now vote. I move, we approve the request of Public Works to remove Scott Becker from probationary status as a full-time residential building inspector. Second.
Second.
All favor?
I.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Paul. Okay.
Thank you.
That brings us to contracts under ten thousand dollars.
Question. I think I just, I just had one question on that and I'll open it up, but it was referenced to the front stairs in front of Town Hall that I guess I think it said it was a inspection or something or a consideration of is that going to go forward in terms of the repair or?
Thank you. Yes, the you had to do a little bit of inspection. We got to do a little bit more. And then we're actually going to need some additional mice in the budget that we're placing forward to be able to then to the work. But we're finding out is we've got some drainage issues down below. We're trying to find exactly where that water is penetrating through the wall. And then the secondary problem that we have is that the staircase itself, while the the entire platform patio is placed on a slab of concrete, the stairs are not. So the stairs are moving each year, we keep pushing their way out due to water pressure. And there's no base below it. So it was a good thing that we actually went out and did the investigation because then that made us realize that we've got to actually take out the entire staircase, put a concrete footing down for it and then build it properly. We've been resetting the stones every several years, but we're just chasing our tails at that point in time. So now we got to do a little bit more investigation to try to determine the drainage problem, and then we'll come forward with a comprehensive plan to take care of the drainage and the the installation of the front steps.
Was that the original set of stairs?
Yeah, they, yeah, pretty much the when they, when they, yeah, when they built it, it's pretty much the exact same. And then we can understand why it's built on a layer of sand, compacted sand and stone dust. No, no concrete underneath it. That's why we continue to get it to push out. Water gets in, pushes the fines out, and then it starts to move itself and then a little bit of free thaw.
So we're going to have to dig it up and put in a foundation.
Dig it up, put it in the foundation, yeah, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Example of renovating is new. So there's no other questions on the contracts, tax overpayments, there's automobile and one real estate on the tablets. I move, we approve the refunds of those tax over payments.
Second.
All favor. Selectmen's comments. Actually. We're going to go into executive session for part of the ARPA fund discussion. And we're going to have an executive session on two twenty Elm. I don't really have comments other than obviously in the news is the new variant from South Africa. As far as COVID, we don't know a lot yet to discuss about that. I don't have a report yet today of COVID cases we've had so far this week, so by thirty-day exception, we'll we'll have an indication where things are going post Thanksgiving or next week will be a good indication of what the post Thanksgiving travel produced. Other than that, I don't think I have any comments.
Just add to the comments, but then if we could just come back on the the agenda item, just wanted to thank everybody who came out for the menorah lighting on Sunday. There's five more nights if you haven't done so already. I encourage you to go out. It was very lovely event cold, but lovely. Also, just a quick comment and thanks to the the farmer's market that had their first season on the lumberyard, which I think was very successful. And I saw your comments back, Kevin, to to Lexi, and I think that they're they're ready for next year, which is just around the corner in April. So I think it was a very successful new new place for the farmer's market. That's all I have.
Yeah, the menorah lighting was cool. Hey, Kev, can you can you update us just on the status of the police department and what the process is?
You know, I'm trying to get to twenty, oh, close. I really, nothing's happened in the past weeks. Expect the Board of Finance will take it up at their meeting.
Their next, their next meeting.
I expect so, yeah, at least in part, so. Or you, you.
Yeah, just if I'd be so kind, so it's an unusual opportunity this month to have three of our Board of Selectmen meetings. Next month it will only be one. It's on the fourteenth. And I know that you don't want to change that. I will not be able to attend that, and I I respect the fact that you want to maintain the fourteenth. I was just wondering if we can take advantage of potentially one extra day. We're going to be covering a lot in December, including potentially more in terms of ARPA funds. It will be potentially the the police station, the library, and then also, and I don't know if we're going to cover this, also the reappointments on the agenda. I don't think we covered that yet, but there'll be more of those coming up. And so I just wanted to, I've given you kind of a an opportunity in terms of a date that I'm available, but if I can, I can push it right off till till Christmas in terms of an additional date as needed. And just a discussion in terms of, do you think we'll be able to cover everything with just one meeting in December or do you think I'd like to be able to be part of the discussion of a number of those items that are going to come up?
We can schedule a special meeting.
Right.
No, I don't know. We need to do it today, so let's see what the agenda looks like by then month.
Okay. Okay, so you don't want to do something earlier is what you're suggesting, and it'd probably be after the fourteenth.
I mean, we meet every two weeks.
Yeah.
Generally, except for a rare occasion where we have a special meeting in June, et cetera, so.
Okay.
But we can look at scheduling a special meeting if we need it.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
As far as the appointments, since the Board of Finance has to go to the town council, all the reappointments for December, actually, it's kind of odd that the regular members are November fifteenth terms and the special members are December one terms. Regular members on the Board of Finance are four-year terms and special alternate members are two-year terms. But they have to go to the town council and in order to move this along, I thought we would have this today, so I move, we approve the reappointment of Todd Lavier and Tom Schulte as regular members for four-year terms ending November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and and Cam Dobbin, Dobbin of Hamel and Maria Weingarten as alternate members for two-year terms ending December one, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second here.
For the discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
unanimous.
Kevin, just on that, could we get a list of everybody who's up for?
Pam has that available.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And we go to let's start the ARPA discussion, the public part of it, and we will then go into the executive session for the non-public part of that. And continue an executive session for the two twenty Elm Street discussion and then come out and vote on the ARPA recommendations. That makes sense? So who's who's going to present on ARPA? Where's Linda? Where's Linda?
Yeah.
I suppose I can leave this discussion and then so the 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 ARPA funds, since we've had a number of opportunities for public input, starting in July, and then continuing with the town council meetings, subcommittee meetings they've had with the Board of Finance. We decided we can't really bring together a complete package, but we ought to begin the process of doing a serial numbers of appropriations. So we thought we start with the ones that appear to be non-controversial, bring them forth to the Board of Finance. They will spend more time with them in mid-December and and to the extent they're capital projects, they'll go to the town council. It appears, you know, we were advised by auditors to follow the appropriation process. So that's why we are starting here, moving forward these projects. I'll start down the list. We're not going to have Linda here. Tucker, do you want to join the?
I'm I'm available.
Oh. So N C T V seventy-nine, in order to continue the hybrid kind of meetings, we've had to invest in technology. You know, last year we made a big upgrade in technology since we hadn't invested in fifteen or twenty years. A lot of the equipment that we got was based on grants from from Cable Vision years ago. So but we need to do further upgrade in technology to be able to have multiple rooms, especially the boardroom, as well as this room that works for hybrid meetings. And Bobby Doran has estimated that at seventy thousand dollars. So that's a off-budget cycle need we have because we the the budget won't be approved until next April. And we have to, we have to be able to continue hybrid meetings, which we will do. You know, the expectation is the legislature is going to amend for you to allow continuation beyond next April, if the emergency powers end next April. You know, it's to be able to continue hybrid meetings because they're very convenient, especially for staff beyond the needs of, we also have to perhaps town council amended their rules to allow voting with remote meetings.
They will revise it once the April deadline.
And we really, we really don't have rules for the Board of Selectmen, but currently, I guess, the the temporary legislation that was enacted allows for remote voting under the legislation adopted, so that's what we're following now. I guess on the advice of the town attorney. So that's first item, if you want.
I can just add the equipment that we're talking about here is for, you mentioned the boardroom and the town hall meeting room. His first request had come in for just this room, but then obviously with COVID and the necessity to have these remote meetings, both both rooms were included in this request. And this has all been done in consultation with our own IT department. They've been very much a part of the process as well.
Yeah, this is sorely needed. It was needed before the pandemic. It's really needed now, and I hope this is enough.
There will be more.
Yeah.
He said there's still more work to be done when it comes to the cameras, you know, and operator. I know we.
Having a camera, right.
We hear people say when we have the large meetings that you can't really focus in on each individual speaker.
Well, and also it it diverts to the or reverts to the, you know, the presentation, and you just hear people kind of droning on.
So that's something that they're still working on how how to correct that or how to resolve it.
I mean, can you have a camera operator work remotely? I would think so.
They have in the past, I mean, seventy-nine in the past, whenever they transmitted a meeting, they were not.
Not here, right. Yeah, no, obviously, I'm very supportive of this line item.
So why don't we just continue through with, we will come out of the executive session to vote on the total package. So next one is Wavingy Park Conservancy. When the Wavingy Park Conservancy started six years ago, the town had made an agreement to work with the Conservancy on projects that they would raise money for. And essentially, the town made no particular commitment of matching funds, although we always had money in the budget to do some hardscape around the with Wavingy House, in particular, the walls. The Conservancy had a transitional leadership in July or so, and they've approved their new five-year plan. That hasn't come to the, it went to parking wreck already? Did it come to the other bodies? So the point is that David adopted a rather ambitious new five-year plan. And some of their projects, as we did in the case of one of the trails or two of the trails, we matched funds, but we don't have any standing commitment. And the idea here would be to begin to get them on a cycle of, as the Athletic Foundation is now an annual appropriation that's available to match. That won't necessarily be spent, but depending on the projects and depending upon the discretion of the boards, we will match projects so that they can extend their and leverage their their fundraising to to do, so we ought to have a presentation from them, but the Board of Finance. You know, I think this has been discussed among the bodies already, that this seems something that we should do. We want to encourage Wavingy Conservancy to continue their fundraising fundraising efforts. They've been very successful in having the Genium Foundation continue their commitment to the Genium Medal. And so maybe our conservancy has been very successful, but we need to, we need to be there to to help get some of the projects done and not not have it be totally charitable knowledge. So anyway, have thoughts about that?
I, I mean, you know, sound like a broken record. It is our crown jewel and we need to support it. I think this is a very good, a good way to do so.
So if I can just add, I agree with that. Is that two fifty? Is that, you're not saying that?
That's for the current.
For the ARPA, right. And and is it also making a commitment for?
No, I think the Board of Finance has got to decide, are they going to do what they did with the Athletic Foundation?
Right.
To have money in the budget every year toward projects as they come.
Right.
They've they've done three hundred thousand dollars a year for the Athletic Foundation, expecting there's going to be a project next summer of a million or two million dollar amount, and we have to, we have to be prepared to to do our part on those projects. Again, this, the the foundational MOUs don't really speak to exactly what the town's obligation is, other than we're partnership. And if we're a partner, we have to, we have to contribute money as well as time, as well as staff and.
So I don't disagree with that. I'm just wondering whether or not it needs to come out of the ARPA funds or just part of our regular budgeting cycle.
Well, again, the thought here too is Wavingy Park was so used during COVID and so much in demand, but not only it's it's become Fearful County's park in many ways.
Yeah.
And we really, we need to invest in the park. So so that's the.
So I would, this is another one of those meetings, opportunities to in December, maybe hear from the conservation, the Wavingy Park Conservancy, that said.
We're, we have to move this on, so the Board of Finance is going to take a, the Board of Finance is going to have to take a good bit of time on these items.
Right. But this will be something I'd like to look at too, but let's move on.
So sorry, this is also a catch-up. We had in my budget, the park's budget, three hundred thousand for the N C A F last year, and the Board of Finance at that time had passed. What about the Conservancy? The Conservancy at that point had not asked for money, so this is almost a catch-up.
They also didn't have their five-year plan done, so they weren't ready.
Sort of like a retroactive catch-up to catch up with the N C A F.
Okay.
And then we have to place money in our budget going forward to then match the N C A F and the Conservancy both at three hundred thousand over each year. And then we can force it aside.
Right.
That's enough, that's enough for both budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the parking fund is simply a transfer of money that because we lost so much parking revenue, we didn't make the annual transfer to the parking fund, which. Was that standard like eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars? Which is the money we use to renovate parking lots, so this is simply a. Recognition that we lost revenue and lost the opportunity to fund that parking fund, any questions about that?
This is for all parking lots then?
All parking lots.
No, I'm on record as saying, I think we should. Start with. Filling in the lost revenue, and that's, that's what we're doing here, so.
Yeah.
Pardon.
Hi.
Pardon. Pardon.
It's a start.
Next item is something we've been talking about for a long time, when we have emergencies, oftentimes our emergency generators go down, and if we really need a mobile unit to be able to. To go to the places needed most, this perhaps could be used, for example, if we have a. Long power outage and our, all of our emergency generators are working, but the YMCA does not have an emergency generator, it'd be good to have a be able to set up a. A. Shelter where people can shower, and so the idea here is this is mainly for the town to back up our existing generators at most of our facilities. But for example, Laughlin Center, we decided not not Laughlin Center. It's Town Hall Annex, we decided not to invest in the. Bring in the emergency power over there, so we, you know, that that building would be out of service if we, so it's it's an idea to have one available for emergencies and. I think also the Board of Finance authorized spending for a lot of mini generators for to give to homeowners who are. So so any questions about this one?
I mean, this has been in the budget for years, and it was always got cut either selectmen or town council or the. For finance.
I think it's a great use of ARPA funds, I I just note that it says it's been in the budget, in the capital budget, so as you go through this then, and you come back to us with the capital budget for the upcoming cycle. All these will be removed, right? Yeah, okay.
Liv New Canaan, they've asked. That we support the realtors for the past two or three years.
Three years.
Have spent over two hundred thousand dollars. On something that really has been a boon to the town in terms of our real estate market, apparently, and also. The town in general, so that that they would like to some support to be able to continue with what this does. And its effectiveness has been proven, and but they they would like some help, so I think this is a.
And if I can add to that. In looking at all these ARPA funds, we've been looking at, you know, something that we can do to support the downtown, the businesses. And while this was primarily designed to support the real estate market, they've taken the whole approach of supporting all of the businesses, they profile the businesses each week. No one pays for any of that advertising, if you will, and it's been sort of the go-to resource now for just knowing what's happening and what's going on, and they're. They're constantly getting content from us, from the chamber, from anywhere that they can get it, and so. It's and they're also hoping to, part of this funding would allow them to add new features to the site, so.
We we gave them some grants from the.
TDAK gave them ten thousand dollars to receive money initially, but they've invested over two hundred thousand dollars, and the Board of Realtors is a nonprofit organization, supporting their members.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough to get ARPA money directly to. Businesses, but this is probably the next best thing, right?
Pretty close, I mean, it certainly helps them.
Yeah.
And they're very proactive about going out and asking the businesses to send them content, and they put it up all the time.
That's great. And economic development is one of the key. ARPA objectives, and we've found it difficult to figure out ways to help the downtown community, so I think this is.
I just, I would add to this, this amount is represents maybe the their annual operating to to run it, so it's obviously something that will.
It's ongoing.
Ongoing, but certainly this year, above all, I think is important to think, and I have gone on their website, and they have a great, for instance, the restaurant one is fantastic, so. I think this is worthy of ARPA consideration.
For all the new people that moved to town, they're very aware of this site as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that reminds me of our discussion yesterday about having an app for the town, which.
Yeah.
We're looking at Norwalk's app, I mean, it's, we probably need to do an app, so when people come into town, they may have this. We currently have.
Explore New Canaan dot com.
Explore New Canaan, but you have to find it.
It's mobile friendly, but it's not an app, but we did learn of an app yesterday that might work that Norwalk's using, so I'm looking into that as well. It's free, basically.
So that's unobjectionable, then we go to Wavine Park Outdoor Bathroom, Tiger, do you want to explain the connection here to the? We planned this for quite a while because. The current bathrooms don't suffice to service.
Place the tires.
Sit on the end for that reason.
Sorry about that. How long have we been talking about this?
For a while.
Outdoor bathroom.
Outdoor bathrooms.
At the potting shed, you know, we we lost the floor in the potting shed, it really is a building, we don't want to let deteriorate entirely, so. Why don't you explain in conjunction with what the. Our House Theater is planning, but this this we would do independently regardless, because we really need additional bathrooms in the park.
Yes, so the thought was, in looking at each park, we we don't have suitable bathrooms during the winter, so. We had worked with Irwin, a solution for Irwin, and for waving in the, and the thought was that originally we'd come forward with the potting shed, since. We already had it, had to save it or renovate it at the time. As Kevin mentioned, the floor collapsed inside, unfortunately, that was due to water infiltration. Coming forward, they had filled the outside walls by about three feet back in the sixties or seventies for.
Prior mistakes. Like the police department, prior mistakes.
Prior mistakes, yeah, exactly, that, well, you you saw the similar situation at the Carriage Barn, right, that we had spoken about previously. So the thought was that at that time, what to do with the potting shed, and the thought was it would be a nice. Addition as an outdoor bathroom. So last year we came forward with a proposal, and we received forty thousand dollars for design work to actually renovate the building.
Which we haven't spent yet.
Which we spent the design, we were working through the design, that was what the part and parcel was, whereby at that time. The Powerhouse Theater was looking to renovate or expand their lobby. That had been a plan since nineteen eighty-three, I believe, when it was originally approved by the first selectman at that time. To then renovate and then expand their costume area and storage, they were only able to do one of the two, so they wanted to come forward with this. They wound up hiring the exact same architect that we were to try to get some synergy in the area to take a look at the entire situation, and at that point in time. While they were, they were thinking of trying to expand their offerings as far as a black box theater or educational or places to practice. They looked at the potting shed and said this would be an excellent area to take over as part of their campus and install what I just said, a block box theater, things like that, and then the architect looked at it. Expanding the existing footprint of where the where their costumes are to put a bathroom facility at. So one way or another, the number is still at about two fifty, two sixty, okay, so if you decide to renovate the the bathrooms in and of itself. The potting shed, our original estimate was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go and do that work, the exterior work and the interior work. To do that, if we decide or the town fathers decide that. It would be better to allow the powerhouse to have the potting shed to do their work with, we could expand next to. The powerhouse itself and put in a facility there, that facility, we're estimating it'd be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we would still have about a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars of exterior work. And a new floor in the potting shed, because that's as the landlord, that's really our responsibility, not necessarily the responsibility of the powerhouse or the town players. The, so the thought is at two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty, we get a bathroom, whether it's in the potting shed or it's a building adjacent there to. One of the two, but that's, that's the thought of going forward, and then I know that the the powerhouse is putting forward a. A request to actually take over the potting shed, and that's up to to up to the top fathers to decide, but the monies regardless would be for bathrooms in the area. It will help for the sledding hill, for anyone who's utilizing the. The, now that we've basically asked everyone to come to where the pond is and the Jenny Meadow, we're asking everyone to kind of go into that area. We don't have any facilities without actually coming into Wavine House itself, which I think is problematic.
Yeah, we really, we really need these facilities there, and is there going to be signage?
To let everyone know that, yeah, we've been, I I looked at a similar facility that was out west and the signage that was there and and what they had done to renovated. Existing buildings was absolutely beautiful, this will be nonetheless the same, so.
Beautiful bathrooms.
Beautiful bathrooms, they saw, regardless of where is it, if it's adjacent to or it's the potting shed, it would be a nice, nice facility. So that's the thought, is the, is that two hundred and fifty thousand, we had two hundred and fifty thousand in our budget. As part when the when the Board of Finance said you can, you know, we'll do forty and then two fifty, so it's there, so if it if it winds up going here, then we'll just remove it from our side, and we'll reduce.
So the powerhouse theater is going to submit a request to the town bodies for a matching. Grant. Toward their fundraising campaign to do their project, this this would be not contingent upon that happening, because this really has to go forward in one of the two locations regardless.
Correct.
So but have the money this fiscal year ready, rather than waiting for next year to be able to plan and get this done. You know, hopefully we can make that decision as to, it really could go either way, either place, but probably makes sense for the Board of Finance to decide. Their meeting, whether they're going to entertain the powerhouse theaters.
Request.
Request. So we just want to continue to move these forward so that we'd have the optionality to get things done this year.
Correct.
So on that, the timing, if you did either the potting shed or as a outside. Spot next to the powerhouse, what's the timing, would that be spring, okay?
Most likely, we would have to finish if 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 it was decided that we were going to do the 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 addition.
Right.
The design through that, and then if it's the potting shed itself, we just have to finish, since we kind of paused. At the point where it came with this proposal to kind of to an entire campus look, then we, I I stopped the.
Sure.
Final design of the potting shed itself to with the bathroom facilities, because it was, you know, I wanted to get an answer first before we expended all the monies on that side.
Do we take on, we use an outside service, or does somebody take care of maintaining all the bathrooms, whether it's at Mead Park or here?
Cleaning service.
We use a cleaning service.
You approve that cleaning contract annually, so that.
Would just be added on, right, okay.
We had added, because of COVID, we had added almost all the facilities in Wavine itself to on a. More increased schedule.
Okay.
Because of that, so we would just add this to it, I don't anticipate it would be that great of an ad, it would be the existing staffing that is already doing the existing bathrooms. The Paddle Hut, Wavine House itself, Laughlin would come and do this one as well, so I think there would be that crew that would come in and do it, I think would be a large of an ad.
So okay with that one?
Yeah.
That brings us to sidewalk green links, which Tiger can address, his favorite topic.
Yeah. So the the thought was that now that we're. The overall thought inside the POCD originally in two thousand and three was that we would. Put sidewalk links between all of our town facilities, mainly our parks. So we would connect the parks together, all of the attractions with the downtown area, and we've been working towards that, and. The two thousand and fourteen POCD had a similar bent as far as walkability, a little bit more focused on the downtown area and the train station. But nonetheless, the exact same thought, so now that we're going forward with this five-year plan of Bristow. The need is almost even greater in the fact that when you look at it holistically, we did the sidewalk on on Weed Street to Irwin, then we did a trail system through the nature center. Gets us over to one twenty-four, and then we have a plan, once the state approves our our side, and we have monies available to do the sidewalk down Owen Oak. Into the town center, the last piece is now from Park Street in essence, and around the corner to Gower Road, or there's a, you know, there's been requests to go all the way to Farm Road at that point, but. At least the Gower Road and taking the. The communities around Old Studio Road, things like that, and then tie in that whole, what we, what we're in essence calling a green link. In the, in essence, tie in all of our parks together. You've already approved a contract for design services to get from Park to Bristow itself, this is to actually go from Bristow around the corner to Gower Road and the construction thereof. So the thought is then it would be an entire connection, we're looking at a grant, lots of grant to take care of all of Park Street. And a lots of grant to take care of Richmond Hill, those are still in the works, we have a commitment to fund on Park Street, we're. Maria just answered another email this morning to the state about the commitment to fund on Richmond Hill, hopefully they'll give us that, then we'll go to final design. Actually, we're past final design, we just have to get the final design approved at that point, and then we can get to construction on those two pieces, and then this would be the last last piece of it.
So so Tiger, is this another example where if we apply the ARPA funds to this project, it comes out of the budget, was this in the budget?
Well, we had, I have, in essence, no, this is an ad, this has always been an ask, but it's been a difficult. Whereby, for the past, up until last year, it had been, the focus had been on maintenance of sidewalks, no new construction. Last year, we actually got money for maintenance and new construction, so in essence, yeah, is it part of that whole four million dollar backlog of new construction that's been requested by the residences? Yes, it has, it's just a question of, but it wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't remove it, it would just shorten that.
Yeah.
Four million down by two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
If that answers your question.
So again, COVID showed us that during a pandemic, people want to be outdoors and walking, so. The whole idea of connecting the parks and making the canyon more walkable is a is a goal with a long head, and we'll give it another piece. The piece I would bring forward is the FlexiPave at Mead Park, but that'll be another round, hopefully.
Right, just generally, I I I think it really is a good idea to do this in phases and not just try and spend six million dollars at once, I think, there's no rush, and I think, you know, do consideration and.
All right, so.
Be careful, smart.
That brings us to a total on these items of one million three thirty, we are going to go into executive session to discuss premium pay. And as well as the. The two twenty Elm Street transaction, and we will come out of executive session to vote on the total. Recommendation on the ARPA funds, including premium pay. I think one other item I wanted to mention, Linda is still with us, Linda, this is your last Board of Selectment meeting, I wish you were here. To recognize you again and wish you well as you depart Friday or next Monday.
We still don't know, do we?
We have a commitment, we have a commitment for the superintendent of schools to work with us through December a bit, because.
Through December, yes, so I'll be, I'll be around, working on budgets and finalizing the audit. So busy, busy December.
And thank you, Linda, we have a few busy days coming up to get the budget in shape to move forward. In December, so.
Yeah, thank you, London, and best of luck to you, my friend.
You know how I feel about you, Linda, but thank you and good luck to you.
With that.
Thank you very much, it's been a pleasure.
With that, we will go into executive session, I have a motion to go into executive session. We're inviting in Tiger, we're inviting Cheryl, we're inviting in Tucker. And Linda, you can stay.
Okay.
We can do that? Anybody else on the, so did we ever get public comments from anybody by email? Did not? But we'll take the vote in public, vote to go into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, at nine twenty. Okay. Let's do the premium pay. Let me just give you a. Okay, it's nine fifty-two, we've come out of executive session. Okay. I need you, I need to give it the total numbers, go up to the table. Okay, we're coming out of executive session at nine fifty-three, and we discussed two matters in the executive session, one was the premium pay. Element of the ARPA fund recommendations, and on that point, we are going to incorporate recommendations for the town employees and the Board of Education employees.
Correct.
Cheryl, you have a total number for the?
Yes, for a total number staff of nine hundred and thirty-seven.
No, that's the Board of Ed.
No, both town and Board of Ed staff together is nine hundred and twenty-seven, and the total amount is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand fifty.
Okay, what were the Board of Ed, I thought you earlier said.
Six ninety-seven.
Six ninety-seven, I'm sorry, okay, okay, that's how we get the man. So I move, we approve. So I move, we approve the ARPA recommendations and pass it on to the Board of Finance, as we discussed in the public session before we went into executive session, but adding the additional amount that Cheryl just mentioned for a total of
Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand and fifty.
To this one million, three thirty, seven twenty-five.
Second motion.
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five oh five oh.
Oh five oh?
Yeah.
Add it to one million, three thirty. That's the total ARPA recommendations and this phase of the, of this tranche or however you want to refer to it. And therefore I move, we approve that, these recommendations as we've discussed. Second? You, you moved already?
Yeah. No, I seconded it.
You seconded it? Alright, for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous on the, on the ARPA recommendations. And then on the two twenty Elm Street purchase transaction, we are moving along toward a closing with Bankwell in December and selling two condominium, condominium units. But we need to be prepared to sign a purchase and sale agreement with the bank, with Bankwell. And we've reviewed that purchase and sale agreement as well as the draft condominium agreement, which still requires further work. But we are only acting today on approving the purchase and sale agreement draft as presented. This has been negotiated with both parties. I don't anticipate there'll be a need for any further changes, but so I therefore recommend we approve this.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would suggest that your motion, subject to, you know, it, it, we're approving a contract substantially in the form as we've reviewed today, presumably.
Right. And if anything, significant change, we'd come back, have another, another executive, or another
Meeting, special meeting.
Special meeting. Okay. With that, I, I, I move, we approve it. And second?
Second.
Further discussion?
None here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving forward on getting a Board of Education stage. And then finally, that's it. I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all. Have a great day.